...department per se. I think many people are here because they're run under that aspect that they wanted to know whether or not we're going ahead with a private police force here, or whether we're going to stay where we are. Not that we're voting on ordinances for the police commission. Maybe somebody can clarify that?
Sure, sir. What we're doing tonight is, and potentially this board will vote on at some point, whether it's tonight or in the future, is this ordinance is being proposed, and the ordinance establishes a police commission whose duty will be to get the policy procedures manual in order, finalize an agreement with Waterford that's already been kind of penciled in, and any other necessary items that have already been listed required to go independent. That would include hiring a police chief. Once everything has been put in order, and that might take no less than three or four months, maybe even a year, I don't think it would take that long to find a police chief. There's ways to get that done. Then we would give the state a 30-day notice, and on that 30th day, or on the 31st day, I guess it would be, we flick the switch and our police chief is sworn in as the first chief of the force. The 22 employees that we have right now that are considered constables become police officers of the East Lime Police Department.
Okay. Question maybe at the end is, what are we gaining by transferring from where we are to where we're going?
Okay. And I don't want to, I mean, some of that's subjective, so, and I, but I've put my beliefs on the table as a leader of the town, and after already spending a year looking at the facts, determined that this is where to go, the pros and the cons. I don't think we lose anything. What we gain is accountability, a leader in town, whether he or she lives in this town or not, and that could be determined. I certainly wouldn't want to, I'll put that opinion out later. We don't want to limit our search, is what I want to say, is we want to make sure we put the best person, nationwide search, to the job. But what we gain is accountability, someone who's going to be responsible for the budget, someone who has vision for the force, someone who stays longer than three years. I think the average tenure of the resident state trooper has been about three years. Sergeant Babcock worked for 17 of them? Was that the number I heard? Something like that. We need that continuity. We need someone who's going to create great officers from these young guys that are coming in and have buy-in.
Why couldn't we ever keep them? Why couldn't we ever keep the citizens?
Because the system of the state resident state trooper is such that they move through. They don't work for us. They work for their force. And their forces, if they want to attain another rank, they have to move on and go to another barracks.
Can we provide what they provide us now at a reasonable cost?
I think we can provide better, better value to the citizens of this town at the same cost.
Very good.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Mr. Cornelius, like I said, if there's anyone else first, Terry. And then we'll have some repeats up, okay? If anyone wants to add something to the conversation.
Terrance Donovan, 25 Woodbridge Road. As you guys know, I also serve on a board here in the town of East Lime. I was at the last town meeting, and Sergeant Maisick did present partially what he's going through. I think there's no need, I mean, there's no question that we do need a full-time police force. But what I think that you have to extend to the public, I mean, out of the thousands that are in this town, 50 or so in here, and a few of them watching on TV, is the overall costs. You're saying the 212,000, whatever it may be, will cover that. But yes, but he also mentioned, you know, we need another dispatcher, another half-dispatcher, we need administration, all that. And we're going to need equipment. And I understand that we're going to be open for grants, you know, being separated from the state police. But I think the board should really think about this before you make a vote. I mean, think really hard and get it out to the public on what it's going to cost the town, not just right now, but over the past several years. Yes, we are going to need a building. That's understandably so. But make sure that everyone knows this, you know? And I also, you know, I agree with you in extending the board, and with a lot of people here, I also agree with, there should be elected, other than appointed, or mix it up. But I just think that you need to convey to our townspeople what it's going to cost over the next several years, decade, or whatever it may be. Because sitting on a board, you know, we make a vote, and half the townspeople don't realize what it was, and they come to us and they complain. And, you know, I sense the same thing's going to happen here, and they're going to do their complaining. So I ask you, please make sure that the public knows what we're going into. I mean, the officers, yes, I mean, they're great. We do need an independent police force. Just please make sure that everybody knows the financial liability that the town is going to incur. Thank you.
Would it be okay if I, by this commission, if I answer his statement with the details right now?
I think it's appropriate.
Yeah. Since so many people have brought up the cost, let me bring up, let me list the cost for you. Insurance, there'll be no liability increase or P and C costs to the insurance, to the police department, and that was an important issue that came up at the last meeting, whether we're under state police control or chief control. The cost of insurance, liability, property and casualty insurance will be the same. The cost to house prisoners in Waterford, the use of their jail, the large evidence locker, and that kind of stuff, the care of the prisoners, we're estimating on the high side of $40,000. We really, we were really thinking we can negotiate that based on the numbers to $25,000. And maybe lower based on a per diem. But we're using 40. We're using the very highest it could be. That's if we brought everybody we ever pulled over, over to their jails, it'd be $40,000. Police chief, between 90 and $105,000 for a police chief. Ledger just hired theirs, I think, 105. We're very confident based on, from the Police Chiefs Association of Connecticut, that $100,000 is the number. That's what I put in. Administrative secretary, we already have one full-time and one part-time starting in January. We go, we take that part-time and move it to a full-time, which is an extra $15,000. And then that person, of course, would be a full-timer, so he or she would receive benefits, and that the benefit package is about $20,000 these days. Recording secretary for commission meetings and their supplies, and this is estimated really high, usually we give commission $3,000, but we know this commission's going to be meeting a lot. We gave him $6,000. Those items, that's normal operating costs, add up to $206,000. Again, I'll go through it again. $40,000 for Waterford costs, $100,000 for police chief, administrative secretary, oh, police chief benefit package is $25,000. That would really be, depending on who we hired, they might not need the health insurance, might be, depending on the situation, it'd be $18,000 to $25,000. I went to the very max at $25,000. It could be as low as $18,000. Administrative secretary, $15,000. Benefits to that secretary, $20,000. Recording secretary, $6,000. $206,000 will be the total operating cost. Currently, we pay 212, and we think that cost is going to go much higher in the future based on $2 billion the state is behind in paying bills in the next two years, a billion There's one-time costs involved. Do we think dispatcher training would be about $5,000 to make them all collect certified? The dispatchers now are going to run plates like I can see on TV. They're going to be helping with, they're going to be a police dispatcher instead of just a fire dispatcher, and we think $5,000, and we think there's actually more money in the budget. We might not even have that cost to look for in our contingency budget. Here's a big one, and let's be clear on this. Our state police requirement, we pay in arrears. We use their service and we pay it at the end. Okay? And I don't think that's the case for the benefit package, and is that the case for the benefit package and the overtime? I think we pay as we go, something like that.
Overtime as you go.
Okay. But, so, we think, if we wait until July 1st, we're going to have $175,000 obligation of the state to get out of it. Or we pay and just stay with, it is a one-time cost. It's going to have to be built into next year's budget. If we change to independence on July 1st, we'll pay 2/3rds of that, or $115,000. If we switch on May 1st, about $146,000. If we wait to the very end of the fiscal year, it'd be $175,000. That's the bottom line. We had to pay, we have to pay, you know, we're using the services now. We didn't pay for it upfront. They sent us a bill at the end. We have to pay to get out. So it's going to be one year where we're paying the chief and the state police. They have to be crystal clear with that, okay? That's upfront, and they'll be built into next year's line item. I know the board of selectmen's just as interested in the board of finance of keeping our taxes low. We work hard at that. But we also want to bring good value for our tax money, and I think we're going to get a good value with this independent police force. We have capital needs. There's a very few items here. The chief's going to need a car. He doesn't need the full getup with the cage and the, all the things that go on the dashboard and in the car and all the safety checks. A $30,000 car, used car, would work and suffice, okay? Until we can run him through the vehicle appropriation process, vehicle acquisition program, and we can, we'll upgrade to a decent car once we get rolling with this thing. But we can get him on the road for $30,000, will cover the first three, four, five years. And then, you know, we'll be buying police cars like we always do. Upgrades to the station. We haven't put any money into that building over there for a long time. The money that we appropriated to put in that building didn't get spent correctly, as I've heard from sources. We need $10,000 right now to just to secure the building. I'm not going to go into the details. It's not appropriate. We do have press here, and I know you'd be good to me and not print this, but there are some security issues at that building that need to be addressed yesterday, okay? Secure doors, locking, I'm not going to go in. Stop me, stop me, okay? $10,000, okay? $20,000 would be needed to develop a processing area, cage, really, sorry, but the prisoners, that's all they get is a cage. A processing area to put someone in a cage to do paperwork, to issue a summons, or whatever the police do. I'm not a police officer, I don't get the lingo, but they can bring someone in, process them, and release them without locking them up overnight and bringing them to court and all that. That can be done in-house. We have space for that. It's been identified. And we can do that and create that space for about $20,000. So $30,000 total for upgrades to the station, and that can be put into capital, our capital We can also create within that $20,000, that $30,000, storage and evidence lockup and extra computers needed to go to this system, all for $30,000. We have computers in our car. In fact, we have two computers in each car. One's a state police computer. We have to buy those. And we have our own computer. We have two radios in each dashboard. We have two radios on each belt. We get rid of one radio on the belt, one radio in the car, one computer in the car as well. But the computer system we use needs an $8,000 upgrade to be independent, so we can run all the plates ourselves, and we can run all the background checks and prior arrests and warrants, outstanding warrants. How am I doing with all this lingo? Pretty good? Okay. Just pretty good is all I need. And Maisick will come up here during the regular meeting, and he'll give you the full-on details, okay? But I want, listen, we're in public hearing, you want to make comments on what I'm telling you. Let me get it out front right now, you can come challenge me on the numbers. Vehicle upgrade, computer upgrade, $8,000. So the total is $68,000 capital needs. We have to pay the state police $150,000 if we stay in the state police for a radio upgrade that has been delayed, admittedly, okay? It was supposed to be like a year ago. It's not going to happen this year. It got defunded, they haven't, they screw, no. The plan for the antennas are not quite right, and the bouncing of the signals, but at some point, if we stay in the state police system, we're going to be required to upgrade our radios to this new system, and it's $150,000 purchase of today's money. Now, go out, 3% interest, inflation, and if it happens in three years, it happens in four years, that's going to come down the road. That's a fact, that building the system now. So it's $150,000 savings, it's $68,000 to pay to take an independent force out there. I'd like to put no more money into that building. Yes, we're going to need to build a new building. I said it right up front, independent or state police, we need a better, more professional building. That's a, it's an ideal retail spot there. If we go out and build a building, there's also a couple opportunities coming up in the next five years this town might be able to take advantage of, to put the police force in another location, or we build a building. I'll tell you right now, Ledger just built their building for $4.5 million. $4.5 million. Go over there and look at it. They'll give you a quick, you know, five cent nickel tour. It's a beautiful facility. Montville, $6.8 million. They built it a couple of years ago. It's huge. It's huge. It's twice, well, of course, they failed at their independence, but that's a long story and a very political story. They have a very big building. It's also a town meeting center. It's also the dispatch. It's also a whole host of other things for public safety, and they built it for 6.8. There's no, we're not going to be getting into the 13 million range and all those inflated dollars. It's not a $15 million building or a $20 million building unless we start, you know, adding to it, and we don't need to. We have a lot of needs in this town. We have schools to build, and we do have a police station to build. I'll put that right up front. We're not doing this so we can get our station. We need a station, okay? So, even money operations, we're going to need to kick in some money for, to buy out the state police and for some dispatcher training. We have $68 million of capital, $68,000 of capital that we need to pay to enhance the building, 10 of which should have been done yesterday. Heck, should have been done years ago. $20,000, which will allow us to do the business of independent force. It'll also keep our, listen, our police officers can stay in town instead of running up to Montville and then waiting around a whole long time for the state police officer to allow them to leave. And we'll be getting out of the state police radio budget. Darlene, could you just make 20 copies, just so we could, or maybe Anna could make it while you're taking notes? Would you mind? Thank you. If we, 25 copies, we can spread it around, you can pass it among yourselves, so you have it in writing, you have it in paper, some people can take it home. I apologize that, you know, again, this is not an appropriation, this is an ordinance. We're just changing the leadership. There is some cost involved, but it can be swallowed up with some of our current dollars and put into next year's operating funds for those one-time costs, and then it's even money, zero-cost neutral. Other comments? Sir?
I agree with the need for the independent force, and I certainly agree with the need for having an elected commission. Maybe a combination in the beginning, but needs to head that way. But my concern money-wise is, we're not just going to have, I don't believe, a chief and sergeants. There's going to be perhaps a deputy, maybe a captain, one or two lieutenants. Not the cost of their increase in salaries, but the backfill. You're going to need patrol officers to fill behind them. I would believe you're not going to take a senior official and have them on the road at a captain or lieutenant level. Have you thought about how you're going to handle that?
There's no plan to add extra layers of management. We have a manager now. He wears a state police officer uniform. We're going to put a chief in. The sergeants are supervisors. They get paid a stipend. They get paid significant money from regular police officers to be leaders, to be managers. Yes, you do. It's not a lot, but it's East Lime. We're not, in our police plan, someday this town may grow. Someday, frankly, we do need to, you know, look at the number of officers we have on in this town that balloons up. But that's not the decision tonight, and that's not the decision this board needs to make. It will be a police commission, it will come down the line. We have grown our force over the years. I don't know that we've kept up, frankly. I look at other towns who have at least 10 more officers within their ranks than we do, same-sized town, or even less. I don't need to necessarily go in that. That will have to happen someday. We, as a community, have to really, have to decide what kind of a force we want. Do we want to go out on every call? Stony Town will go out on every call. Cat stuck in a tree, elderly lady locked herself out of the house, someone needs directions, they'll go out on every call, period. You know, so.
Well, that may not be practical, just an observation.
No, I appreciate it, and I didn't mean to lecture you. I'm sorry. The plan today is not to add lieutenants, captains, deputies, or anything else. We're going to keep the same management style.
I believe in earlier, in last week's meeting, that we were presented with information that did call for that, that did call for a lieutenant and additional structure. I don't see it here right now.
We talked about it.
The sergeant has something bad to add.
Yeah. Maybe we should, well, do you want to talk to that right now? Our plan is not to hire a lieutenant right now.
Just at that point, I'll just.
Sure.
Sergeant Michael Maisick, East Lime Police. Currently, so it would be to replace a resident trooper that's current with the chief. Our current structure now, we have an administrative sergeant position that is not considered part of minimum manning as the officers who are out on the road, the patrolman and the sergeant who does supervise. In our current contract, we do have language to bring in a lieutenant position that would be in lieu of the current administrative sergeant position. So yes, you would have a second command, he would be under union, but that is already there. So it's not like we'd be bringing outside body back in to supplement or replace him because currently, as we do operate, they are not considered part of minimum manning. So it won't affect daily operation. Hopefully that does clarify it. The only reason we don't have one right now is it just has not been negotiated into the contract. Language is set up to have that position, just not the job description and/or a pay scale per se.
There was talk, Mrs. Hardy, of lieutenants and such, and I think we miss, didn't misrepresent ourselves. I think we got ahead of ourselves. I think we talked about the structure, what could be someday, and what might be someday. Again, as the town grows, it's not a decision that this board will make about what we're going to do about lieutenants, and it will be something that the police commission will make down the road.
Can I just add clarity, boy?
Well, sure, and then Mr. Cornelius can get up, back up there as well.
Thank you.
Aye aye.
Lisa Picarazzi, 14 Oak Hill Drive. Could you just explain the $40,000 cost for Waterford? I'm not, I just don't understand why that would be a different charge. How are we operating now that we don't have the charge? Thanks.
What, what we'd use, when we pull over someone, they need to be locked up and maybe make bail, or maybe taken to court the next morning, we need a jail. At proper jail, there's all sorts of liability and requirements and requirements on that. We don't have a jail with bars and all the things. So we would need to take them to a proper jail. We're actually working with our prison that we, we, the prisoners now go to the state barracks within our state system, so every time we pull over someone that needs to do that, that's, that's many times a year, we have to go up to Montville. And that's part of the price of the 212. There you go, so.
And there are some soft costs in here. They're not going to be in this, that the cost of driving up to Montville, 12 miles compared to 4 to Waterford is a cost, tax on officer's time and gas and everything like that, but that's not even in.
Putting an officer back on the street, you know, in an hour instead of in three hours and all that, yeah. Mr. Cornelius, I sat you down, I'll set you up.
Two quick things. Has there been a study of other towns that have gone through the same transition? And I don't need for you to answer that right now, but my second point was that I did speak to a resident who is a state trooper, and he was in favor of a independent force for various reasons that I won't divulge, but would Trooper Siri like to comment on his, where the two hats and what, as a taxpayer and a trooper, would you like to comment on that?
Retired trooper, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, then I request that you do.
Okay. That's a really good question. I've lived in town since 1984, but for 22 and a half years, I served as a resident state trooper in Salem. Salem is exactly what the resident trooper program is designed for. It's a perfect setup. I was in town a long time. I knew everybody in town, which is the best thing, and the worst thing about being in town for so long. In that situation, it's a great value for the town, because if a trooper gets hurt, sick, or a car gets banged up, the state takes care of replacing that, and the cost is known going up front. And I think in East Lime's case, when, if you go back to the days of Mr. DeLora and the early part-timers and so forth, it was a perfect setup, but it's grown too big for a resident trooper program. You need your ultimate supervision, I think, here on a regular basis. I think the state police still has some fantastic leaders at every level. I just retired like a little over a year ago, and if I had to do it all over again, I would. It was a great experience for me. But I think where we are right now, considering the talent we have in town, it's the right thing to do. People want to know when they call, they're going to get a response. Reports now take several months to get sometimes. And here again, that's just because of the backlog of the state. It's no intent by the state's, state police, it's just that they're so backlog. Here, you can go down, get a report for most cases. Here again, there's some cases you can't get. If it's a case open, it's still under investigation, you can't get it, names are redacted out, but you'll be able to pick up a copy right in town here. And here again, that's a little bit of revenue, too. We can charge for people to get that, as I think Sergeant Maisick will talk about a little bit. It's not a big revenue source, but you do get compensated for it. I think you're deserving, you're giving a better product to the town. If we have an incident right now, a serious incident tonight, resident trooper will probably be here, but you're going to get a supervisor from the troop as well. If it happens in town under your own police department, your chief will be here. And you don't have to worry about compensating him, that's part of his job. At his rate, when they get paid, they're paid, they're on call all the time. And if he's not here, you'll have a designated number-two person to do it. So I think it's a really good time to do it. I, you know, Bruce says a dinosaur, well, unfortunately, I'm right alongside him. Obviously, I'm one of the shorter ones. I mean, Bruce is more of the T-Rex, I'm more of the, I don't know, Triceratops or something like that, something like that. But we've got some fantastic people here. You look at all the things, Mark Cuomo and Gene, I think they're two of the best detectives anywhere on the eastern side of the state, in the entire state. Their solve rates are fantastic. Mark reaches out to the community, he has these applications on cell phones for people to contact him. We're ready to make this move, and we're going to provide a better product to the residents of the town. And I still love the state police, too. I mean, it was a great marriage for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. You walk that delicate line very well. Yes, sir, how are you?
Yeah, I know, nobody wants to go to the microphone, but we have to.
David Tretter, 21 Brainerd Road.
I do.
I like Mr. Siri. I'm a trooper and a resident trooper and a member of this town, and born, raised, educated here. Wholeheartedly support this decision to go to an independent. They're professional, dependable, and they should have done it years ago. My issue is, stop with this cost-neutral stuff. It's not. It's not cost-neutral. It's not even close. I'm okay with it. We're good. But $200,000, I don't know, my math is bad, but that's not $200,000, is it? You know?
Yeah.
You know, it, address the issue. You're giving them a chief. They're going to need a hierarchy. It may not be when they get a chief, but they're going to need a hierarchy. They deserve a hierarchy. You're going to need a second. When the chief's gone, who's the second? You're going to have to pay them, okay? They're going to need a department, a police station. It has to be done. So why is that not, why is it, $200,000, it's cost-neutral. It's an issue that's going to have to be addressed, and it's a big issue. So as a taxpayer and someone who's not going anywhere soon, I'd like to see that addressed. Stop saying this is cost-neutral. That's about it for me.
Okay.[1782.36]
That's about it for me.
Any other comments?
Pat Larkin, 14 Oak Hill Drive. I'd just like the comments that I made about a resident. I'm not against going to nationwide search, but when they're selected, they should be required to move to our town after selection and live in our town and be a part of our town.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Do we, do we take a motion to close the public hearing? That's what we do.
I move.
Second.
There's a second, a little favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to close the public hearing? Any abstaining? Okay, the public hearing is closed. We'll move to the rest, we're going to move to the regular meeting in about five minutes. We'll take a break. Castello's, Dino from Castello's was here. He went, he came back with pizza. So there's a pizza in the lobby for those that didn't get dinner, and we're going to reconvene in about five minutes.